Welcome. I am Angelique Johnson Dingle, the District Superintendent for Western Suffolk Bosse's and your moderator for today's virtual hearing of the Monitor for the Wyandans Union Free School District. Today's public hearing will accept comments from the public in regards to the fiscal status of the district. In my role as moderator, I will explain for viewers and participants how this hearing will be conducted. I will call upon speakers who wish to make comments or ask questions, and I will ensure that public comments that have been received prior to this hearing are entered into the public record. I am joined this evening by Mr. Albert Chase, the Monitor for the Wyandans Union Free School District, also Dr. Gina Talbert, Acting Superintendent for Wyandans Union Free School District, and our New York State Education Department, who is the Assistant Commissioner for the Office of School Governance, Policy, and Religious Independent Schools, Ms. Christina Coughlin. In addition, on the call with us, we have interim Commissioner Shannon Tahoe, in addition to Deputy Commissioner for P-12 Instructional Support, Dr. Kimberly Wilkins. Our agenda for today's meeting is as follows. I will first explain how this virtual public hearing will be conducted and how participants will be chosen to part to speak. Next, Mr. Chase will do a presentation on the fiscal matters that are covered in legislation so that we all have common information about this topic. Next, I will provide an opportunity for individuals who are participating in this hearing to make comments regarding this topic. This will be followed, if time allows, by summarizing public comments that have been received prior to this hearing. After Mr. Albert Chase has finished his presentation, we will open it up for questions from everyone who emailed us indicating that they would like to speak today. When the time comes for public comments, I will call upon each speaker in the order they signed up to speak. When I call your name, your microphone will be unmuted, and you will be given three minutes to make your statement. When you have 30 seconds remaining in your allotted time, I will inform you. After the three minutes is up, I will thank you for your statement, mute your microphone, and I will move on to the next speaker. If there is anyone listening who would like to make a comment, you can still submit your comments to the email address on the screen at wyandanspublichearing1@gmail.com, and your comment will be made part of the record of this hearing. It is now my pleasure to introduce to you Mr. Albert Chase, Fiscal Monitor for the Wyandans Union Free School District.
Thank you, Angelique, and welcome to all of you who are participating in tonight's virtual hearing. I am Al Chase, the Monitor assigned by the Commissioner to the Wyandans School District. I have more than three decades of experience on Long Island in school district finance and have served as Assistant Superintendent for Finance for several Long Island school districts. I'm very familiar with the fiscal challenges faced by districts such as Wyandans. This hearing is being conducted to meet the requirements of a new state law that directs the Commissioner of Education to appoint a monitor to the Wyandans Union Free School District. The Wyandans School District is not unique in this regard. Similar provisions of law also require the Commissioner to appoint monitors to the Hempstead and Rochester School Districts. A somewhat different provision of law establishes monitors for the East Ramapo School District. As the Monitor for Wyandans, I am charged with providing oversight, guidance, and technical assistance related to fiscal policies, practices, programs, and decisions of the school district and its Board of Education and Superintendent. Unlike my colleagues in the other districts I've named, I am not responsible for also reviewing the district's academic program. My charge is focused solely on fiscal issues. On May 1, 2020, I was appointed by interim Commissioner Tahoe to be the Fiscal Monitor for the Wyandans School District. Public hearing that we are conducting today is required by the state law that established the position of monitor. We are doing the hearings this month because by law they must be conducted within 60 days of my appointment, and we wanted them to occur during the school year. The purpose of the second hearing is to explain the role of the monitor in providing oversight and assistance in fiscal matters of the Wyandans schools and to take public comment on the fiscal performance of the school district. Every New York State school district, with the exception of the big five cities of New York, Yonkers, Rochester, Syracuse, and Buffalo, operate on an annual budget that must be approved by the voters in that community. The residents of the school district who have lived in the district for at least one month are U.S. citizens and are at least 18 years of age are eligible to vote. It's not necessary to be a tax payer. The Chief Executive Officer of the school district is the Superintendent of Schools, who manages the day-to-day operations of the school district. In turn, the Board of Education appoints the Superintendent and is responsible for the management and operations and policymaking of the school district. School boards are elected by the voters of the community. The Wyandans School Board has seven members, each of whom is elected to a three-year term. Due to the fact that I was appointed on May 1 of this year, I did not have significant input into the development of the 2020-21 school budget, so I am not in a position to attest to the specifics of that budget. In terms of the 2019-20 budget, which is the current year budget, the school district appears to be on solid financial footing, but any projections regarding the fiscal year-end condition at this point are best left to administration as well as to the independent auditants who are working with the district on this matter. They alone can determine what the year-end fiscal condition will be. My role in the financial... My role in the financial condition of the school district will begin with the 2021 school year year-end condition and then the 2021... I'm sorry, the 2122 budget. Just to give you a recap, the 2019-20 budget, which is the current year that we are in the process of ending right now, is $69,6957. And the revenues that's what this budget arrives from three sources mainly. State aid, which you can see is almost $44.6 million, tax levy, which is nearly $22 million, and miscellaneous revenues such as interest and earnings, rental of facilities and so forth, which are about another $2.5 million. As you can see from the budget, nearly 65% of the budget is supported through state aid. 31, almost 32%, supported by tax levy, and then 3.6% by miscellaneous sources. Now, just to go through the budget increases over the last four years, in 1718, the budget went up by 3.76% and also went up by the same percentage in the 1819 year. In the 1920 year, due to the fact that the district was forced to be on a contingency, the budget went down by 3.24%. And now, in the 2021 year, it is estimated to go up by 3.94% that budget having been voted on yesterday and approved by a supermajority of voters. The 2021 proposed budget is... Seven... I'm sorry, the 2021 proposed budget is $71,723,026. The revenues are similar to what they were last year. The state aid is shown as an increase of about $2 million and now comprises 65% of the total. The tax levy, again, 31.5%, and miscellaneous 3.5%. So those three sources are pretty stable and have been in the same proportion for the last several years. One of the responsibilities of the monitor. The first is to serve as a non-voting ex officio member of the board. Second is to assist the board in adopting a conflict of interest policy that ensures board members and administrators act in the district's best interests. Third is to work with the board to develop a proposed financial plan for the district no later than November 1 of this year for the 2021 year school year and for the four subsequent school years. Fourth is, beginning with the 2021-22 school year budget, I need to ensure that the budget is balanced and consistent with the district's long-term financial plan cited in the item above. Okay, I want to go through each one of those items. The first being serving as a non-voting ex officio member of the Board of Education. The fiscal monitor will, by virtue of his position, serve as a member of the school board with the right to attend all meetings, both public and executive session, and to participate in discussions on all matters coming before. The monitor is not entitled to vote on matters coming before the Board of Education, nor is his presence considered in determining if the board has a quorum of the entire body. The next item, to assist the board in developing a conflict of interest policy that assures that board members and administrators act in the district's best interests. Ensuring that no employee or board member has a conflict between their official duties for the school district and their outside interests is critical to maintaining the fiscal and operational integrity of the Wyandans schools. The development of a comprehensive ethics conflict of interest policy in accordance with Article 18 of New York State General Municipal Law will assist greatly in attaining compliance with that. The next item is working with the board to develop a proposed financial plan for the district no later than November 1, 2020, for the 2020-21 school year and for the four subsequent school years. It's crucial to the fiscal stabilization of the school district that a long-term financial plan be developed to guide the Wyandans schools into the future. Within that plan will be the consideration of capital projects, such as the connection of the county sewer line and housing of the pre-K and kindergarten programs within the district boundaries, both of which, you know, have been problems or issues for a number of years. Remember that a plan is just that, it's a plan. It consists of our best estimates, facts, sets, and decision-making at a given point in time. Plans are subject to alteration as conditions change and must be updated to correspond with present conditions. To continue on the district's long-term financial plan, in developing that plan, the monitor and the board will examine the impact of things such as contractual salary increases, a long-term outlook on the cost of providing outside services, trends in benefit costs, changes in debt service of the district, and future needs of the school district in terms of enrollment, staffing, and, again, capital projects. The draft financial plan will be subject to public review and comment prior to being finalized. So there will be a public hearing to review this before it is finalized and sent to Albany. Should there be disagreement between the monitor and the board on aspects of the plan, such matters will be brought to the attention of the Commissioner for Attention. Okay, beginning with the 2122 school year budget, ensure that the budget is balanced and consistent with the district's long-term financial plan. The monitor will be responsible for conducting a comprehensive analysis of the district's proposed budget. For the 2021 school year, which is the school year coming up, the New York State Office of the State Controller is still reviewing that budget. A comprehensive review of all budgets going forward will be conducted by the monitor in conjunction with the administration and Board of Education as well as outside parties, such as the New York State Office of the State Controller, to ensure that assumptions and projections are reasonable and that the budget appears balanced. Just take a second. Now, these are also responsibilities of the monitor. To provide semi-annual reports on the fiscal and operational status of the district. To assist in resolving any disputes and conflicts between the Superintendent and the board or among board members. The authority to disapprove travel outside of the state, which is paid for by the district. And to recommend cost-saving measures, including, but not limited to, shared service agreements and to notify the board in writing regarding any violations of the financial plan. Now, we'll go into those in detail. The first, to provide semi-annual reports to the fiscal and operational status of the district. The legislation requires that a report be provided twice a year to the following parties: the Governor, the New York State Legislature, the Board of Regents, and the Commissioner of Education on the fiscal and operational status of the Wyandans schools. The report shall include copies of all contracts entered into by the school district. The monitor will have access to records and documents of the school district, including databases. I currently have the ability to generate a wide variety of financial reports independently. Next item is to assist in resolving any disputes and conflicts between the Superintendent and the board or among board members. Overwhelmingly, when disagreements, I should say, arise between the Superintendent and board members or among board members themselves, such disputes are able to be resolved internally. For cases where these disagreements cannot be resolved, the monitor will make every attempt to handically bring the parties together. Next is the authority to disapprove travel outside the state, which is paid for by the district. In the past, there have been questions raised regarding the travel of employees, administrators, and board members to out-of-state conferences. Due to the fact that the school district is operating under very tight budgets, these are expenses that need to be controlled. The monitor is empowered with the final decision-making on the necessity and benefit of travel outside of New York State for meetings and conferences. The next item is that... The next responsibility, I should say, is recommend cost-saving measures, including but not limited to, shared service agreements. In recent years, the state has made it increasingly easier for school districts to seek out economically efficient ways to procure goods and services with the goal being to save money through such things as bulk purchasing in conjunction with other governmental entities. The avenues to do this include buying cooperatives, New York State, County, Bosse's purchasing contracts, federal contracts, as well as businesses receiving minority and women-owned business enterprise certification from the state of New York. The next... The last item, or the last responsibility, is to notify the board in writing regarding violations of the financial plan. A violation of the five-year financial plan might exist where the administration or school board attempts to spend funds on questionable items or to spend funds when funds are not available for the intended purpose. Another example of violation of the plan would be where the school district is forced to make cuts mid-year due to changes in revenue projections but refuses to do so, therefore jeopardizing a balanced budget at year-end. In both of these cases, the monitor would notify the Board of Education of the violation and request a corrective action. If a corrective action is not forthcoming, then the monitor would advise the State Education Department for possible action. That concludes my part of the presentation.
I thank you, Mr. Chase, for that overview of state law and regulation. Now that we have reviewed key provisions of state law that addresses the role of the fiscal monitor in terms of financial issues, I am going to ask those individuals who have signed up to speak to come forward. Each speaker will have three minutes to make their statement and/or ask their question. So the first individual that I am going to call forward is Ms. Letitia Walker. She has submitted a couple of questions that I will read into record, and Mr. Chase will provide his response. After Mr. Chase is finished providing his response, Ms. Walker, you are unmuted and you will have three minutes to speak. So it says, "My name is Letitia S. Walker. I am a parent to a fourth-grade student as well as the PTA president at the Dr. Martin Luther King Elementary School and a candidate for trustee for the Wyandans Board of Education. My budget questions for you are the following. Since our neighborhood is 90% disadvantaged with enrollment increasing by approximately 200 students yearly with little to no after-tax generating dollars, how can your expertise help a severely depressed district like ours grow? Can you give us some points you would or have successfully used? Second, I believe sports is an incredible family engagement tool, and I find we need sports in our schools. Do you feel the money allocated to our high school sports program is best used there? Why or why not? Or can it be useful someplace else, and if so, where? And can the budget be amended to reflect that? Thank you for your time, Letitia Walker."
Thank you, Ms. Walker, for your questions. Yeah, there's no doubt that Wyandans is financially stressed with a growing enrollment and a very limited tax base. My observations over the last six weeks are that Wyandans had both operational and fiscal issues. On the operational side, it's apparent, and a lack of adherence to budgets led to an accumulated deficit over the previous two years of over $3 million. Dr. Talbert has been very cognizant of these past problems and is working very diligently to operate both effectively and within the constraints of the budget, all while moving the district forward in a positive direction. In my 40 years of experience in school district finance, I've become expert in a number of best practices that I feel I can pass on to key individuals in the school district. Of course, the district must be receptive to those practices. Hopefully, these practices will assist the staff to become increasingly effective and result in savings and a better use of resources by district personnel. The second part, in terms of athletics, I agree with you that it's very important. Athletics are a very important part of the school experience, I'm sorry. Involvement in athletics can lead to improvement academically as well as a way to motivate and instill critical developmental skills in many children. I rather, at this point, not address the issue of whether those monies could be put to a better purpose. That depends on many factors and is very different in the judgment of various individuals.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. We will unmute your phone, and if you would like to make any other comment, you have three minutes to make your comments.
Good evening, all. Firstly, thank you for this amazing forum just to address the Wyandans Union Free School District's budget constraints and budget growth propositions. Mr. Chase, thank you so much for your response in reference to us being financially stressed and particularly in light of your six-week observation. I'd like to speak to your operational observations where you said, "Due to a lack of adherence to budgets in the past, we've accumulated a $3 million deficit," where Dr. Talbert has graciously led us to the best of our ability to move forward and to adopt a new budget, a new way of looking at things, new transparency, new accountability. You mentioned, sir, that there is a level of expertise that you have that assumes best practices. Would you be so kind as to just give us two itemized details of what those best practices are? Secondly, with respect to your athletic response, all due respect, I understand, and I guess that's something we'll look at moving forward. And finally, our fiscal response is an avenue, as trustee-elect now, that we will look at in partnership and in coalition building in our community. And finally, I look forward to working with you all.
Thank you. In terms of best practices, what I find really is that one instance certainly is regarding staffing. You know, there's no bigger expense of a school district than staffing and the benefits. And what I like to do is to go through, you know, each individual who works for the district, look at their salaries, project the salaries for the following year, make sure that, you know, we have all that information correct. That is critical to the job that's done in the district since that is the biggest expense. You know, we can't be wrong in projecting what those expenditures are going to look like. So, you know, I pay an awful lot of attention to that because that's where our money's spent. You know, it's not in the places where, you know, if we overspend $100 on supplies, that is not going to be a problem for the school district. What is a problem is that if we begin hiring people or contracting for services that we haven't budgeted for or haven't planned for. So that's one instance. The second is related to that, and it's in terms of long-term planning. We can't just think about what's going to happen tomorrow or next month or next year. We're really going to think about where we're going down the road and to try to get to where we want to go. Sometimes it takes a long time to get there, such things as... That were mentioned before in terms of capital projects. Well, we have to see, you know, how much debt we have on the books, when some of that debt is falling off, and when that opens up an opportunity for us to now go into other areas and maybe be able to spend some money on capital projects and so forth. So long-term planning, I feel, is key. And, you know, I would like to make sure that, you know, staff at the district feels the same way or understands why this is critical so that the district can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Walker, for your comments, and thank you for being here with us this evening. The next request we have is from Mr. Joseph Jenkins. Mr. Jenkins, you just asked for the opportunity to speak, so we are going to unmute your line, and you will have three minutes to make your comments.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello?
Yes, hello.
Okay, well, thank you for hosting this meeting. Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I have two questions I want to ask, and I'll let you answer them. Now that the budget has passed, what assurance would the committee have that the district will use this increase to support academic programs? That's the first question. The second question I have is, will there be a national search for experienced superintendent of schools that has a track record of turning underserved and underprivileged communities at school districts around? I'll wait for the answers.
Okay, just so I have your questions accurately, Mr. Jenkins, you are looking for a response on how we can assure that the district will use money to address academic achievements within the school district? And if you can just please clarify for me the second question that you had, please.
Will there be a national search for experienced school superintendent that has a proven track record of turning around underserved school districts?
To clarify, are you asking if we are going to conduct a national search for a superintendent that has a proven track record in order to help districts that are fiscally stressed?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you so much for those questions, Mr. Jenkins. Your questions have been noted into public record, and we will follow up with the... With obviously a comment or response to these questions, possibly in conjunction with the school district. Thank you so much for being with us, Mr. Jenkins. At this time, I do not believe that we have any other comments. I'm checking to make sure we didn't receive another request in the mailbox, and we do not have any other comments. I would like to say thank you to everyone who was on the call with us, and I would also like to thank Ms. Walker and Mr. Jenkins for their comments. Thank you for your dedication to the school district, and thank you for being with us. A record of this public hearing will be made available, and it will be posted on the school district's website, in addition to a copy of this PowerPoint. Again, we thank you for your participation in this evening's hearing, and we certainly look forward to working together with the Administration, the School Board, and the community to stabilize and improve upon the fiscal performance of the Wyandanch Public Schools. Thank you all again. Be well. Good night.